Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start. Welcome to the City Council Successor Agency, the Redevelopment Agency, City of San Carlos, meeting of May 22, 2017. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
How many want to change anything? All right. For A, we have a couple of, more than two proclamations for the first one. Basically, proclamation to Rain Real Estate, Lingso Garden Materials, A1, A1, I apologize. A+ Japanese Auto Repair, Devil's Canyon Brewery, and Tools Garage in recognition of receiving certification as a San Mateo County Green Business. San Mateo County is not here tonight, but Kristin's going to stand in for them. And you can explain what this is all about. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So, the San Mateo County Green Business Program is a partnership of environmental agencies, cities, and counties that are working together to promote businesses that operate in an environmentally and sustainable manner. So, San Carlos, along with other cities in San Mateo County, is a partner in this program. And our goal is to get as many of our local businesses as possible to become certified green businesses. So, the county provides some assistance to these businesses to learn how to integrate sustainable initiatives into their operations, how to conserve water and energy, reduce waste, prevent pollution, and to save money and improve profitability. And so, with that, I'll pass it back to the mayor. We're excited about the businesses that we are honoring tonight.
Okay. Thank you. They're all dated differently. So...
Sorry?
Oh, that's why you... Hello? 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 Okay. So, as Kristin said, this is a great program. We have, we had our own program. In fact, the first one, A+ Japanese Auto Repair, we gave you one, I remember. I was here. I was here. But anyway, this is just about a year old because a lot of these for the county have, instead of having one at a time, we sort of boxed them all together tonight. So, I commend all these businesses. People say that if you're in business, you can't be green. And there are five companies here that disprove that. And I appreciate it, and the citizens of San Carlos appreciate it, and heck, our environment really appreciates it. So, I'm just going to call you folks up and hand you your certificate. We also have a proclamation from the city to accompany the certificate. So, A+ Japanese Auto Repair, we'll start with you guys. And again, this is the second one for you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Devil's Canyon Brewery Company. Congratulations. You're welcome. Hey, it's great. Thank you. Lingso Gardening Materials. I think it's Garden Materials, but anyway. Of course, you've been in San Carlos for a while now, but we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Tools Garage. Great to see you. Take care. And we have the last one, although they're not here this evening, Rain Real Estate Services. So, we'll make sure they get both of these together. Okay? Thank you. Our next item is a proclamation to the 4th and 5th grade class in the Smart E program at Arroyo Upper Elementary School, 3rd place winner of We Think Waste 2017 Trash to Art Contest. So, I really want to give these guys a hand. We have, we have, I have names here. So, this evening, the teacher Sarah Balling is ill this evening, I believe, so she isn't able to come. But Madison Guzman, or Madison Guzman from We Think Waste, is Madison here? Okay. Well, I'm representing her then. And the students are Ethan Pulser and Katie McMurtry. McMurtry. So, you guys are here? Okay. First, I'm going to give you the, I'm going to go give you your certificate, and then you can explain what it is. And we can bring it up here and show everybody. Okay? So, let me do that. I'm going to read a little bit of this proclamation because it's important because it was part of Earth Day on April 22. It's a nationally recognized day and community-driven national awareness event in the United States, and nearly 195 other countries dedicating and celebrating our world and promoting responsible stewardship of our world. This is the 50th Annual Trash to Art Contest inviting all 3rd through 5th grade classes and individual students to try to participate. And we had about 20 individuals in six classes that participated. And as I said, the 4th and 5th grade class of the Smart E program at Arroyo Upper Elementary School, led by the teacher Sarah Balling, received the 3rd place award for their unicorn art piece constructed from aluminum trays, plastic tubes, and paper. So, who's coming to, get this, you guys, you are, I'm missing names here. Ethan? Okay. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay? That's all? Okay. Would you, would you bring this up a little bit so we could see it? And maybe you could explain how you guys did this? In fact, maybe we can put it on a, maybe we can put it on this thing here. Let's do this. Oh, take them all, Bob. Okay. Let's put it up here, if we can. Can we put it on here? Put it on one of these? A little bit better? I don't know. Or maybe worse. Anyway, you can hold it. So, would you explain, will you guys explain? Ladies first. You want us to explain part of it, and then you can explain the other part?
So, we used paper cups to make this. We used fabric. We used boxes, spools, and it was a lot of work. A lot of people got burned doing it.
Okay. Want to add to that in a more positive way?
So, this is a funnel and a paper cup, and we just wrapped it in like a glittery material. And this right here is actually something that you would put in front of your window. And we kind of folded it up into that kind of shape and colored it. And then, this is just kind of like the popsicle stick material, but it's in a different shape. And then, this is foam, and they just sewed it together. And we have more kind of, this is stuffing and stuff, foam, and it's attached. And there's a wood piece in there to keep it up. And then, this is a box, and it's all covered with this kind of stretchy white material. And then, these are actually huge spools and pie tins.
Great. Well, congratulations, guys. Take that with you to take it back to school or wherever. Good job. It just shows you that, you know, people say it's junk, it's throwaway, whatever, you can make something out of it, especially art. Good job. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. I have a couple of cards. The first one is Gordon Deegan. Mr. Deegan, did you want to come up to the microphone there? Welcome.
Well, I have been busy in this room quite a few times, serving on three commissions and a committee and a few other things. But now, my interest has gone to, well, something that I've been interested in all my life, that is history. And so, I decided I would come tonight and give you a history lesson. You know, when Christopher Columbus rediscovered the Americas in 1492, thereafter, the western coast of the Americas was quite active with explorers up and down the coast. Vizcaino, Cabrillo, Sir Francis Drake, Uyoa, Bering, and countless others that I can't name now. But in 250 years, they never saw the Golden Gate. 250 years! That's a long time. Until one day, August 5, 1775, a little ship did see it. They had set out from San Blas in Sinaloa in Mexico. And the first thing was that they were called the cursed ship because everything went wrong. Their captain had a breakdown of some sort, some say he went crazy. And the second-in-command, Juan Manuel Ayalaia, had to take over. So, what did he do? He went up snooping in the captain's cabin, look around and see what he was in charge of, and shot himself in the foot with one of the guns of the previous captain. Well, anyway, they did get started. And August 5, 1775, it must have been a clear day like we've had recently because they saw the Golden Gate. And after many tussles with the tides and the currents, they got into the San Francisco Bay. And a moment of history was set. The chaplain of the ship, Father Vicente Santa Maria, did some reconnoitering, got acquainted with some of the Indians, and even tried to learn a little bit of their language. And his account of those 44 days that the ship stayed there, anchored first off of what is today Salzalito, and then later the island, which is now a state park. And they learned quite a bit. And I, probably you have guessed the name of that ship. It was the San Carlos. So, that's why I'm here. Because I found the story very interesting. And in the city news leaf here, in October to December, there is a master plan of the Transit Village. And here, in front of the train station, is the provision for a fountain. And my suggestion is that we tie ourselves into the history after all, sharing a name and sharing indirectly a lot of history, that we suggest that a fountain be built there with a stylized ship. It can be considered the The San Carlos, although The San Carlos wasn't much of a ship. It was just a little packet. But it was, you know, named, we were named for it. And I would like to see that done by a good artist. I've been in contact with all of you. You've received my emails, I believe it was. And I've talked to the Chamber of Commerce, I've talked to the History Museum here, and I've been in touch with the chief planner for Prometheus, the company that is developing the Transit Village. And so, I suggest that you also put your authority behind creating something like this to tie us in to the history of 250, almost 250 years ago, the San Carlos entered San Francisco Bay. And now, in eight years from now, San Carlos, and yours truly, will be celebrating their centennials. So, I would love to see this fountain take on that form and that history. Because it's important that we tie ourselves to our backgrounds. Because we can learn a lot, we can feel the pride of those events. And I want to see a fountain down there by the railroad station in the form of a ship and somehow or other around the base. That little ship, August 5, 1775, be commemorated in the city that bears its name.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Deegan. Thank you for your input.
Clap for that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'd just like to tell everybody that Mr. Deegan was my high school Spanish teacher for two years. He's been in San Carlos a long time. He taught at Carlmont for 27 years. When my wife and I went to Europe about 10 years ago or so, I asked him if he would help me brush up on my Spanish. Because we were headed to Spain. And he also gave me a couple of good places to go. And we went there, and we had a great time. And my Spanish saved us, so we made the train in time one of those times. Anyway, it's great to see him. Thanks for coming and talking.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we, if there's enough interest on the council, can we ask staff to research this a little further and bring something back to us?
I would, I would agree with that, yeah. See what we can do. Actually, when you started, Mr. Deegan, I thought you were going to ask us to build a ship, a full ship. And I was concerned that we'd have to build the whole ship out in the water, but thank you. Appreciate...
That's just it.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm just, I'm just kidding. But anyway, thank you. Appreciate your input and your history.
The side of...
I'm sorry?
The side of the law, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a couple more speakers. Mara Lang?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I'm actually here today representing the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to let you know some of the exciting events that we've had and the ones that we are having in the upcoming months ahead, and hoping that all of you will help participate in those and that all of you will help participate in those. So, on May 17, we had a joint mixer with the Redwood City Chamber of Commerce at Dominico Winery. We had over 100 participants at that mixer, and it was a really great event and a wonderful attendance. Coming up, we have our regular scheduled farmer's market every Sunday from 10 to 2 in the 700 block of Laurel Street. And the crowd is growing. And I know that our police chiefs are sharp on it and making sure that everybody is safe. But we'd love to see everybody out there supporting local businesses and our farmer's market. On June 11, another opportunity to support our local businesses where we have 20 merchants in the 600 to 800 blocks of Laurel and the 1100 and 1200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue, as well as the 500 block of El Comino Real with our summer wine stroll. It's our second biannual, I guess. You know, if you look up biannual, it's either every two years or every, twice a year. It depends on how you say it. Semi-annual, no, biannual, no, really, we looked it up before. You can say it either way. It never, it's a conundrum. This is our bi-
Wrapped in an ingba. Go ahead.
It's our biannual wine stroll. We have one, had one in the winter, and now we're having one in the summer. So, please come out and join us there, June 11. June 14 and June, July 12 are both member mixers at local businesses around the area. And then, also to add on to the wonderful San Carlos Citizens Academy, or as a precursor to the Citizens Academy, is the Leadership Redwood City. And those applications are available online through the Redwood City. And finally, I want to tell everybody that the prestigious Cameron Johnson is coming out tomorrow morning at Le Boulanger from 8 to 9 o'clock to go ahead and talk about the East Side businesses. So, if anybody wants to join us there, we would love to have coffee with you. Thank you for your time.
Prestigious, hmm. Thank you, Mara. I don't know what the rest of us are, but anyway, that's another story. Next speaker is Rita Fassaro. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to talk a little bit, just two seconds or maybe less than two minutes, about parking on Holly. So, as a resident of Holly Street, I've noticed that on the weekends, we're starting to get people that are parking there, I think mostly for the farmer's market. And while it's nice, I think because there's limited parking downtown, so the overflow is coming onto Holly Street, it kind of really, it kind of impedes on some enjoyment that we get to, you know, have on the weekends, which is open parking. As everyone knows, we don't have any parking during the week. So, on the weekends, we really look forward to having that freedom, have people come and visit. And so, all of a sudden, now we've got people that are starting to park there. Is there maybe something that the council can consider in their upcoming powwows to maybe talk about that? That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the posted agenda? Go ahead, come on. I wasn't sure where to put you, so...
I'm sure you weren't.
So, it's really frustrating to stand here. You know, since 2014, there have been so many suggestions, you're moving at very slow pace, right? When you have to do the right thing. You seem to move really fast when you want to do restriping, things like that. And I don't think you did the due diligence. I would like you to go and look at the pictures. Does a truck and SUV fit into the lane? I would like you to look at it and tell me. You know, if you had put your $10,000, you know, worth of measure we contribution to putting some reflectors in front of Rick's house, you might actually gain some goodwill, right? So, if you go back and look at the City Council videotapes, I recommend the audience to do this, there's at least one person here who has referred to the 2017 overpass as a pivotal event. I would like to understand why that is, right? I mean, on face value, it seems like you're adding a bike pass, right? And we've asked so many times to have bike lanes on Holly. And you know, that's never gone anywhere, although we've brought it up several times. So, I would like to understand why that is. So, I would also like to get a copy of the traffic demand management plan that you have and how that, you know, what you, what you have done around that. So, I would like to get a progress report on what you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment items not on the posted agenda? Okay. We'll move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just after Rita had spoken and asked about whether there's anything we can do, can we ask whether or not staff has looked into establishing a permit parking program on the Holly Street corridor or on Holly Street?
Mr. Walter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. At this point in time, we have not included the Holly Street residents from the, into the residential parking, parking permit programs on the East Side, primarily because the, the residents in the south of Holly neighborhood had been concerned and complaining about a number of commuters and employees from the East Side businesses parking in their neighborhoods. And so, we felt like the first thing we needed to do was allow them to have the parking permit program for their streets alone without including, including the Holly residents. So, we did not include them at this point in time.
Thank you, Jay. For what it's worth, I don't know if anybody else is interested, I'd certainly be willing to have staff consider that as an option, assuming that, I think as we normally do, that the majority of the residents in the corridor would want a permit parking program. I wouldn't want to force it on anybody, but if they wanted, I'm happy to see that brought back.
Aren't we, aren't we talking to the folks north of Holly also? I'm sorry, Jay. Yes, we are. So, maybe if we're talking to the folks north of Holly, maybe we can just include the folks on Holly in this, in this situation also.
We certainly can send them out a notification on June 1, is when we'll be having the, the meeting for the north of Holly neighborhood at Laurel Park Building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That would be fine. Thanks.
Okay. Great. All right. Another public comment. All right. Move on. Item number six, approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine, enacted by one motion. No separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move approval of consent calendar items A through J and adopt ordinance 1520, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of San Carlos amending sections of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 10.32, stopping and standing and parking, creating a no overnight parking zone inside the San Carlos Library Parking Garage, and creating additional time limit parking areas on Cherry Street, Chestnut Street, and the San Carlos Library Parking Garage.
Second.
All right. Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mary Cassily?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next item, seven, reports to council, 7A. Report to the council on the Holly Street/US 101 interchange improvements and pedestrian overcrossing project C 9459. Mr. Walter?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director, here to give you a report on the status of our US 101 Holly Street interchange project, one that we've been working on for a number of years and is reaching a very critical stage as we move forward into the next six to nine months. So, tonight, we'll talk about, for a little background, the project purpose, what the different components of the project are, where we are in terms of current status with the, the design and the environmental phase, and what's left, and some new architectural elements that we wanted to bring to your attention. And then, also, we want to talk about the funding, that funding situation and the schedule as we move forward. So, again, as the, as the council is aware and for the benefit of some who have not heard this before, the purpose of the project really has had, it's, it's been twofold. Really, the primary purpose is to improve the safety and operation of the Holly Street interchange. And that is by eliminating the weaving sections that are on the top of Holly Street, as well as the ones that are underneath where the freeway ramps are merging and diverging. We're also looking to reduce the pedestrian bicycle conflicts with vehicles on Holly Street through the interchange. And as we have added the pedestrian bicycle overcrossing, we're trying to really improve the connectivity for pedestrians and bicyclists through the interchange area east-west, connecting downtown San Carlos and our train station to employment centers east of the freeway, as well as the Bay Trail and other amenities. Yes, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Just a quick question for Mr. Walters, or really not for myself. I know the answer, but for the audience and considering the public comment, can you explain how bicycles are meant to get, say, from downtown or the train station over to Industrial Road and then across this new interchange that we're talking about making?
Sure. If you, if you would be willing to wait, I do have that issue to address on a slide coming up here very quickly. Okay. So, again, looking at elements of the project, and the diagram that you see on the right is actually a picture which shows the, the completed project. So, what we've done is we've removed the loop ramp from this quadrant and the loop ramp from this quadrant, essentially allowing for traffic signals to allow the ramp traffic to come on and off of Holly at both sides of the freeway interchange. So, what this does is it improves that safety by eliminating the weaving sections below on the freeway, as well as the weaving sections on the top with, excuse me. I thought it was going to work better with our, just a moment. The, the Holly Street weave that occurs now when you're coming up across and you have to allow that loop traffic to come on, and you're trying to merge to go onto the loop to go onto the freeway. So, that's, again, a primary component of this project is, from that standpoint. And we also are including sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides of the bridge as you cross through from the industrial road intersection all the way through over to the far side where you meet up with the Skyway Shoreway Road intersection. There's a small amount of right-of-way that was acquired at the, for the right-turn lane here at a here at Industrial Road, and that's so that we could have an additional through lane on Industrial going northbound. That was one of the elements of the traffic study that was included in the improvements for the project. So now, looking at the elements for the pedestrian overcrossing. As Council can see on the diagram now, it shows that completed project picture again with this white line being the pedestrian bicycle overcrossing that goes across the freeway just south of the current interchange. And in answer to Councilman Grokot's question, as it relates, what we expect is that pedestrians and cyclists that are in the downtown area, they'll come down San Carlos Avenue, they'll cross El Camino, go through the train station, and then using the signal at East San Carlos Avenue and Old County Road. Those on bikes will bike down the Bike Boulevard to Industrial Road, where we are in the process of beginning installation of a new traffic signal at East San Carlos Avenue and Industrial Road. And then those folks on bikes will come through the East San Carlos Avenue, which is a private street, but it'll have a public easement on it, they'll cross through into the freeway right-of-way on a path here, and then that'll tie them over to the pedestrian overcrossing. So what we're allowing for is folks to be able to stay away from Holly Street corridor, because we know right now, and probably for the near future, we have very congested conditions and very narrow conditions. So that's the reason why we were asking folks to move over to that area of San Carlos Avenue and then East San Carlos Avenue. Once they reach the other side of the freeway, there's an interchange area that allows them to go back onto Holly Street or Redwood Shores Parkway and heading east, or connect down to Skyway, which allows them to go south through to Redwood City on the Bay Trail, and/or head over towards where we hope there will be some connecting trail to the Bay Trail as it goes around Redwood Shores farther out to the east. So I think we're setting up well for the non-motorized folks on bicycles, walking, or otherwise using that pathway to get back and forth east-west in San Carlos. So we feel like this is a very important component of the project as we move it forward. Is that, was that clear enough?
Yes. Like I said, I already knew that, but I just want to make sure it got highlighted.
So the project's status at this point in time, the environmental work is complete. Caltrans was the project lead on the environmental document, the interchange improvements were categorically exempt. Essentially, that's work that really has minimal to no impact on the environment, and it all stayed within the interchange area footprint, and so that's the reason why it was so minimally impacting. The pedestrian overcrossing, there was an initial study done, but it was with a negative declaration, found with no mitigation needed. So again, we had a project which staying within the interchange area, very already disturbed areas, nothing significant to be impacted, and so we were able to get that cleared about a year ago. Caltrans is, because they're the lead agency, they're starting through the process to get federal regulatory permits on our behalf, so we're kind of waiting along their timeline. We had a little bit of right-of-way to acquire a utility easement, which we had to negotiate with PG&E to be able to have the pedestrian overcrossing go underneath the high-tension transmission wires that run north and south along 101, and a couple of other utility relocations that will be taking place as the project gets ready to start. The design is 95% complete, and we are in final review from Caltrans for those documents. They have to approve them, right-of-way has to be certified, and we get what's called a ready-to-list so that we can advertise the project. The plan is for the city to advertise the contract and be the administrators of the contract, and that's something that we'll be working on. We have, tonight in the audience, just for your information, our design consultant, Raj Ponemeyer, is here along with one of our subconsultants, so as we go through the presentation, if there are some further detailed questions, I may be able to refer them to our experts. So, something that we've talked about recently, and we've begun our conversations with the city manager at Caltrans and our design consultants is, how can we make this, the interchange bridge and the POC a little more unique for San Carlos? And so one of the things we talked about was, on the main bridge over the freeway, where with the roadway, we talked about the idea that on the railings, we can add some architectural elements. And the thought we had as we've been moving forward is to add some arch features to that bridge, not particularly expensive, but yet a feature that you wouldn't see on a lot of bridges, and again, it will help set the San Carlos Bridge out as somewhat unique. We of course have to have lighting for the area on the bridge, and so that's something that will be part of the normal project that we'll be completing. So something else that we've talked about doing, and that's the project itself, the diagram on the right is not the easiest thing to read, but where the, these terms RW1 through RW5 are shown with these dark lines, those are areas where we have retaining wall surfaces. And so what we've done is, we've looked at some different elements that we would be putting into the formwork on those concrete walls. So for example, in the, this wall that's designated RW1, which essentially faces over here to the Hiller Aircraft Museum, we've got some aviation history images that we've thought that we could put into the facing of that concrete wall. This is formwork, and so it's relatively inexpensive from that standpoint, same concrete walls, but it's the forming that gives it that, say, that design and that feature. Another wall, the RW3, which is the one that's here, it's one which a number of the travelers on 101 will see, as well as folks coming on the ramp, and we've come up with the idea of using a circuit board pattern, and they tell me that this is special secret circuit board for something, but I don't know what that is, and we probably would need to have a contest to have somebody figure out what it actually is for. Another element, a lower type of wall is one that we have for, where it's just got some sort of decorative concrete finials that are formed in, and then as the forming is removed, those elements remain. So these are things that we thought that we could do for some unique features of the concrete walls that we're going to have as part of the interchange. And then one of the things that we thought about, well, we're going to have this pedestrian overcrossing, and we thought, well, we're thinking about the idea of arches for the main bridge, and so we thought, well, let's think about a way that we could have some, a real unique feature on the POC, the arches with some changeable LED lighting, so that's kind of our concept so far. And so you can see that during daylight hours, you'd still be able to see kind of the green color of those arches, they would stand out against the blue sky. And then in the evening, you'd see that that would be lit, so you'd have essentially the same color effect when you would be looking at that. This is the view from the freeway, as if you would be heading underneath it. And the way that works essentially is, this arch is kind of a channel segment that is shaped and then placed on the outside of the railings of the bridge, and inside that is where the LED lighting source is, and that's where you'd see the LED lighting along that length of that arch. Now on the bridge itself, we also have LED lighting for the pedestrians that are going to be on there, and then we've also got some lighting that would be for the actual bridge structure horizontally and then vertically for the columns. The interesting thing about this, as we've been talking about the lighting, one of the things that we can do is we can have lighting that adjusts to the actual light, and it can be lighting that isn't on all the time at the same intensity, it can be different intensities, and it can be programmed to turn on in sort of sequence or in kind of a range of sections as someone would be crossing the bridge. So it's a kind of an energy feature as well, but unique in terms of its lighting. So the idea now, if you're looking at the pedestrian bridge from the freeway, without the lights on, essentially, this is what you'd see, and if the arches were lit, this is the view that you would get. A pretty unique look, otherwise for kind of a dark freeway through this segment. The other thing then is we would light the edge horizontally of the bridge structure, and then the columns vertically. These are things which, you know, we've talked about and have looked at ways to make these stand out for travelers through the area. The other neat feature is that as you look at this, you can see this lit with different colors, such as with the green and yellow just shown from there, it could also be orange lights, it could also be red, white, and blue lights on the arch. Could be a variety of colors, Giants colors, if we wanted to such, have that as part of a World Series championship celebration or some such thing like that. And then also, at a different time of year, you may be able to have different light themes that you could use. So let me go back to that, to that last one. And so this idea is something that we are in discussions with Caltrans about right now, with the idea, the concept of being able to do this type of lighting. There's, they have certain rules and things that, you know, that you have to comply with as you would get approval for these various bridges, and so this is something that we felt from a city standpoint, we would like to see a way to set our bridge apart from others, and not by simply the, maybe the type of concrete or the type of the structure itself, but with relatively common elements, such as the railings and lighting for those different components. Okay, so talking about funding. So far, we've had about $4.6 million spent on the design and environmental assessment phases, mostly achieved through grants that we've received, the Measure A and the state's TDA Article III grants, the city's traffic impact mitigation fee has contributed as well, and so we're fully funded through these phases. And then as we get into construction, what we're looking at now is we get ourselves close to being completed with our plans and specifications and the different components, and what we need is, we're looking at a total cost of about $24.5 million. And the, you can notice in here that we do have a contingency of 10%, and then construction management, materials testing, which is essentially the administration of this contract as we go through the construction phase. Because it is a large project, there's a lot involved in that phase, and so that's the big reason for the dollars that we have attached here. Now, when we look at our sources of funding, we have approximately $14.5 million that has been committed with various grants, as well as some successor agency bond proceeds and some of our city traffic mitigation fees. So at this moment in time, before we would be able to advertise the project for construction and be able to move forward to that very final step, we would need to be able to fund that $10 million gap in terms of the construction costs. So how are we going to do that? One of the things that we've done, Rebecca Mendenhall, your Administrative Services Director, has put out an RFP for Financial Advisory Services, so that we can bring some expert help in, so that we can get advice on filling this $10 million gap with perhaps debt financing, bond funding, using reserves, coming up with other sources of revenue to pay for the project, such as continuing to seek grant funding. And the other, say, possible solution to this is, if we don't have enough money to move forward, we simply would delay the project. Now, there is potentially some consequence to that. We did have one of our grants extended by one year, so right now, we're looking at, we hope to have everything lined up, funding source in place by no later than March of 2018, which is the one-year extension we had for, that we got for the TA grant for the bicycle and pedestrian overcrossing. So there are some consequences to waiting on a project like this. Now, one of the things that staff has recently learned is that because of the passage of SB 1, the, there is now greater availability of funding for the active transportation program, and because our POC project, when it competed, it was put on a contingency list, it's very likely that that project and other projects on the contingency list will be picked up with that extra money. So we're very hopeful, that's something that we won't find out more about until this summer. And again, once full funding is in place, we'll, construction can begin, we're hopeful as soon as the late calendar year 2017. So at this point, that's a status update on the project, and there's no action for you tonight, but certainly, any input questions or other things that you may have, be happy to take those, and then we'll bring this back at another date, because we will have to come back to you with a decision on how do we fund that $10 million gap, and what steps do we take to be able to get the project ready to be fully funded.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. And Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jay. Good presentation, as always. Several questions here, let me start with kind of the obvious one, particularly when we're looking at, I did the calculation, we're only about 59% funded on construction, so we're less than 60% funded. What, hypothetically, what could we do to cut the cost of the project itself? In other words, rather than look for increased funding, does, you know, we gave you advice about how we'd like this thing to look really pretty and clever and whatnot, do we save any significant money if we just say, build us a bridge and a pedestrian bridge that meets the safety criteria, and that's it?
So, there's a couple of different options there. The last one that you mentioned is, it relates to, we'll call it the aesthetic treatment that we're talking about for the bridges. I think we're looking at probably at least $1 million for, in total, the cost of the aesthetic treatment. So if the Council decided that it was the regular concrete bridge railing and all that that would be normally specified, we probably would be at least in that range to be able to cut down some of that cost. One of the other things that had been mentioned was splitting out the POC from the interchange improvement project and building them separately. So in theory, you could save $5 million off of that cost initially, but we have built the plan so that these, we actually achieve a $1.5 million savings by building the projects together. That is, you're building things that work for both the POC and the interchange improvements, that if you did them separately, they may have to be torn down, modified, rebuilt, in order to accommodate that second feature.
So you'd really only be saving $3.5 million bucks?
That's, yes, net $3.5 million if we were to do that.
Since this is just a update report, personally, the next time this comes back, I would love to see further exploration of whatever clever things staff can think of to reduce costs. Again, not necessarily because I want to push that we do them, but I think whenever we're looking at the significance of a funding shortfall, we really need to look not only at sources of revenue, but also ways of saving money. The, when you and I had talked about this situation a little earlier, I think you had told me, or maybe I'm confusing this with another project, that some of our grant applications, we obviously received a number of grants, but some of our grant applications or applications for funding from other sources were rejected. And I'd like you to just refresh my memory on why we think they were and where we applied, and do we have a chance of applying for them again?
Well, the largest one that was rejected, and that was this last fall, was through the active transportation program, which starts at the state level and then comes down to the regional level through our Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So we had proposed and submitted a grant application of $3 million to help us fund the pedestrian overcrossing, because that component of the work was eligible under that program, the program guidelines at the state. And the project scored well for essentially connectivity and the, providing that pedestrian bicycle access, but what we ended up with was, some of the guidelines favor disadvantaged communities and serving areas where there's more transit-dependent populations, and so some of those, we didn't rate very highly on in terms of points. So we fell short in those categories, and that's really kind of what kept us from that upper tier of projects to be awarded money, first at the state and then at the MTC level. So as a result, our score has us on a contingency list.
So that sounds like, well, there may be applications to apply for the next round of these things, whatever they are, that the circumstances might not change much, because it doesn't sound like the scoring methodology is going to change much. So we shouldn't necessarily hold that a lot of hope. Last question for now is, I've always been struck by this project, you know, it has, in my mind, two separate elements. One is to improve the safety of the interchange itself, but the other is also to provide better connectivity between, across the freeway, basically. And in that regard, and actually, I suppose from a safety point of view too, that benefits not only people in San Carlos who are going to use the interchange to get on and off the freeway and want to take their bikes and get over into Redwood Shores, but it also benefits people in Redwood Shores using the freeway interchange, and the bicycle, pedestrian overcrossing as well. What discussions have there been about trying to get some support from, I guess it would be Redwood City, for this project? Either directly in terms of financial contributions or indirectly through their support in our application process?
So we did approach Redwood City directly for the, essentially to help us fund the project, because it does land in Redwood City on the east side. project, because it does land in Redwood City on the east side. There's a portion of that Holly Street, before you get to Skyway Road, that is actually in Redwood City. And we asked them about that and asked them to consider in their own capital improvement program, some contribution for the project. And we were, we were told that, no, that wasn't a priority for them. And, you know, we appreciated their consideration up to that point, but we were not, we were not given any sort of a sense that they would be willing to contribute to it. One of the other things that, that we have done now is we have, with the information about the project now and kind of getting into this final focus, our economic development manager has initiated some conversations with businesses, high-tech companies on the east side of the freeway that are high employment, that have high employment numbers, that are ones whose employees are regularly using the east-west connection to the train station to be able to get to and from work. And so, we've, we've not heard back anything yet, but we're hopeful that perhaps there may be some, maybe some small amounts that could be used from those companies as donations to help offset some of our cost. But those are just two of the ways that we've tried to kind of reach out to the area that this serves.
Let me, thank you. Let me just leave you with two additional thoughts based on that last answer. One is those outreach effort to the companies over there, which I think is great. We should really urge them, if they want to help support this too, that perhaps they should be talking to Redwood City as well, since they are part of Redwood City. And the other is, you know, I respect Redwood City's view that this is not necessarily a particularly high priority for them. That may mean that the connectivity element of connecting the pedestrian overcrossing really isn't that big a deal. In other words, because the, that's one of the things that I would expect, that if it was a big deal to them, they'd go, yes, we definitely want that improved, because right now, it's not very good. So I think that's something we ought to think about really carefully about what that actually means, in terms of the implications for the scope of the project and whether we do the pedestrian bridge, you know, initially as part of the bigger project or not. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Jay. So, as you know, I sit on the board of the TA, which is the primary funder of this project. I was really shocked to see $10 million shortfall. That, in all the discussions that we've been having, I'd never heard that number. I went back and looked at the, the call for projects when the $10.7 million was appropriated, which was like, less than two years ago, and the, the scoring says, you know, that the city of San Carlos is requesting $13.5 million, of which they wanted some for the pedestrian bridge, which was taken out. You know, they're being awarded $10.7 million. How much funds needed to complete the project, zero. So, you know, the point of view of the Transportation Authority when we made that appropriation was that this would be fully funding the project, and so now, you know, as I say, like, it feels like less than 18 months later, the, the budget for the project is significantly higher. So can you help me understand what happened there? And, and simply because when you look at how the TA scored this project relative to many other highway projects, it scored it very high. So did we simply not ask for enough money at the time?
I think that's the, the basic reason. And part of that is because we were not far enough along in the design of the whole project to know exactly all the things that were going to be involved. So, it's one which, I think it was a little longer than two years ago, I think it was actually three, that we put in that initial application, but nevertheless, we, we were well short of the money that we need now. Part of the reason for that is, we have included a contingency amount, we've now included the construction management piece and all the testing that we need to do during the actual administration of the project. And the, the, the project itself has become more expensive in a couple of ways. There's some utility relocation costs, which we didn't expect. The smart corridor project, which was put in a couple of years ago, that has fiber optic cable in it, was not put in, in a place where this interchange project could simply just be built and it could remain in place. So we have a significant cost to, to change that out and to relocate that. And then, overall, construction prices have gone up in the last couple of years, and we've seen that with many of our bid projects. So, a perfect storm of a number of things, but bottom line, yeah, if we could have asked for more money back then, we probably would be in better shape. I don't think we would be $10 million in better shape, but we'd be closer.
Okay. I mean, you know, at that very same meeting, we appropriated $56 million to interchange in Menlo Park, and I just went last week and put the golden shovel in the ground and turned over the dirt, because they're starting construction on that. So, what is, what has your conversations been like at the staff level with the TA about the fact that, hey, I mean, I guess the, the thing I want to say to my colleagues and everybody knows is, this is not really a city of San Carlos project from the perspective of the funders. This is a Highway 101 project, and the goal of it is to alleviate traffic on the Highway 101 corridor. It's a series of interchanges that are being done between, all along the county, and this is one of them. That's why they're committing over $10 million taxpayer money to do it. So, it's not out of the goodness of their heart that they want to create interconnections over the freeway for the city of San Carlos, it's because they want to move traffic up in north-south. So, given that, I mean, what's the perspective of the staff at the TA in terms of bridging the funding at this point?
Well, what they've been insistent upon since we've been in discussions at all about various grants that we've tried for, has been, how's the city going to come up with the extra money needed to fully fund the project? And we've said that we have a combination of sources, that would be city sources and future grants. So at this point in time, we've-
Can I just, sorry to interrupt, but when we voted on this, we were told that that would fully fund the project. The only thing that we were asked, that this, that was being discussed in terms of supplemental, was the pedestrian overcrossing, which was seen as a, a good thing to do, but potentially a nice-to-have. But, I mean, I, I think the question here is, you're saying that the core underlying project, we have insufficient funds to-
That's right.
-move forward.
That's right.
So, that was not the understanding of the board, and when I've talked about it with staff, it has not been the understanding that we had insufficient funds and that we needed to get supplemental grants, because the grants we've been doing, as you said, are for things like active transportation, which is for biking and pedestrian, right? We have, do we have any grant applications currently for the core interchange project?
There are none, because there are no programs available right now to, to do anything with. So one of the, one of the issues for us is, when the TA issues its call for projects for the highway program again, we can't apply for additional money at that time.
So I sit on that subcommittee-
That's one of our only options.
This isn't, this isn't the TA-
Or the subcommittee, I'm trying to wonder where you're going here, so I'm sorry, I'm missing, I'm missing the point.
I am, well, I guess I'm frustrated, because I feel like we, we missed the boat here. And I, I think my point of view, sitting on, and I'll just, maybe just close here, but my point of view, sitting where I sit on the TA, is that there may not be a future call for projects that's coming, which is what we're currently discussing, because of the, the funding needs that we have today. And so, I'll just say that, you know, as you know, the, the pedestrian overcrossing money has a one-year time limit on it that we got extended. The, the highway money now has time limits on it, which we're going back to people who haven't made progress on projects. So, I'm just, I feel like we need a, a strategy here, and I'm concerned that we don't have one.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, really, one, one question, Mark asked the other question I had. You talked about bonding. Are you talking about a bond measure that would be put before the San Carlos voters?
I suppose that could be one of the ideas, but the other would be that the city would sell bonds, and that, that we would use those proceeds to pay for, and then those bonds would be paid off. So again, our financial consultant would help us with various options that the council could consider, and we would have a strategy recommended for you.
All right. So it would be up to $10 million that we would bond for?
At this point, I would say, yes, that's probably what we would do. Again, as we will, as we select that consultant, sit down and sort of strategize that, I think we'll have some other ideas to bring back to the council for how we bridge the gap. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
How much of the, I had a couple of questions. Funding from the state, other than through MTC or these other programs that come through the county, is zero?
We have, we have no money from the State of California transportation funds for this project.
And that's because?
That's something, the decision was made even before I got here, not to apply for any STIP money for this project, State Transportation Improvement Program. So that's simply been the reason why we have none. And, and actually, if I, if I may, that actually was a good strategy, when I look back now at what happened just two years ago with the State Transportation Improvement Program, where they ended up being short-funded, and they ended up having to find a way to kind of defer and delay projects that, I think it was to the tune of about $750 million, where money was not available for the, for those projects. So, that was one of the things which I felt good, that we had not been involved in the STIP program up to that point.
But still, to Cameron's point, I think, you know, this is so much a state project as much as it is San Carlos or even San Mateo County, because keeping this, this freeway going and operating smoothly is paramount to the state's economy and everything else that goes on, so.
You know, I don't disagree. However, Caltrans prioritizes projects and improvements, and when they look at local interchange improvements, they tend to push that off to the locals and to the counties to do whatever they can, and it's, it's only occasionally that they get into funding any kind of a local interchange improvement project.
So, you answered the question about Redwood City. When was that, and is there any idea of returning to them with, you know, now that you've got the project more delineated, if you will, any, any thought of going back to them? How much did you have when you went to them the first time?
It was probably about nine months ago that we went to them. So we didn't, at that point, we hadn't identified a $10 million hole in funding, but we were looking really just to find out if they had an interest in participating in the project, so we could certainly reach out again and ask the question.
The other thing that just comes to mind, I'll just throw out, you know, some comments is, I don't know how much the Harbor Industrial Area is, you know, they're lunch-in and so forth, they're members, how much they're aware of this, how much the Redwood City Chamber of Commerce is aware of this, and do they have meetings that we could go and present and speak to them? Because, you know, I agree with, you know, the guy was here, you were talking about the history, look at the history of Redwood Shores, that, that for San Carlos was where we missed out on a similar thing that was done when we bought Alaska from Russia. You know, it was there, it was available, we could have got it for pretty cheap, and we didn't do it. Now it belongs to Redwood City, but like you said, this thing, and, you know, it has a landing point in Redwood City. It seems like they would have some interest in helping us fund this. I like your idea of going to the companies, you know, and trying to negotiate a private-public partnership, because it's, you know, also paramount to their businesses. Reaching out to Mullin, reaching out to Hill. Then I just have two other questions. You know, there's the bird in the hand, they say, is better than two in the bush, and seems like that's going to apply here of getting started and using the grant money that we have versus doing nothing and then losing it and having to go through this whole process all over again.
Absolutely right. We, we do not want to jeopardize the grants we currently have.
Yeah. And then the other, the last question I have is just, when you're showing all the niceties, which are very nice, the lighting and, and the, you know, the arches and the whole thing, I thought, wow, that could be something that looks very nice. And then I came, what came to mind is when Belmont put in the spaghetti bike pedestrian pathway over the freeway, and they no sooner got it finished, and it got hit with graffiti, and it, I think they've sort of solved it, I don't know how, but originally, for like the first six months, that thing was a graffiti target. And so, I was wondering, have we thought about any anti-graffiti measures for all of this?
At this point, we haven't, we haven't got to that sort of finish stage yet. I think we're trying to figure out, first of all, practically, whether these, this different type of aesthetic treatment could work well, how would it work, how would it function? And, and then, we would need to provide some sort of protection for it, so that it wouldn't be vandalized and sort of, you know, taken advantage of, so to speak, and/or, you know, turned off or something like that.
So unfortunately, those kind of things have to be thought of, because there's that negative element out there. So, thank you, Jay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, thank you, Jay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of additional questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Actually, just an observation, and by the way, Cameron, I appreciate you going into, in great depth there, because I was not privy to all those discussions. I think what we may be hearing here, from the fact that the state didn't really make this a high priority, that Caltrans isn't making this a particularly high priority, and various other, and Redwood City doesn't view it as a particularly high priority, that it isn't a high priority. And I'll just leave, you know, close off by saying, maybe what we need to think about doing is, if it makes sense for local reasons to build a pedestrian overcrossing, pedestrian bike overcrossing, which, which we have talked about doing and which Caltrans has forced us to separate from the rest of the project anyway, maybe that's all we do. Maybe we don't modernize the interchange. And if our choice not to modernize the interchange causes Caltrans to go back and say, oh, wait a minute, we actually were kind of counting on you to come up with some of the money, because it's not a priority, but it's not that low a priority, maybe that will cause them to reprioritize things and come up with some additional money. Because if it's not important enough for them, I'm not sure it should really be important enough for us.
Well, since I haven't talked, I guess I'll get to talk. I disagree 100% with that comment, but, but again, that's why we, there's five of us up here. I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great project, it's going to help our city as well as help the transportation. So, I think we can find the $10 million, and, somewhere. I think the bonding, or some situation, and I think there's so much, we've already got, what, $14 million committed, or should we say, promised to us? I'd hate to walk away from $14 million, assuming we could find a good way to do it. But, anyway, thanks, Jay.
Okay.
All right. 7B. Report to council on automated license plate readers update. Chief? How are you?
Good, sir. Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, members of city council, Greg Roethlis, police chief. I'm here to do an update on the automated license plate readers. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce you to a gentleman, my new boss, Assistant Sheriff Jeff Kernan, who's in the back of the room back there. Good evening, Jeff.
Jeff, how are you?
Jeff is the new Assistant Sheriff in San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, in charge for all of operations, which includes all the contract cities, the unincorporated areas, investigations, our crime suppression unit, our gang intelligence unit. He has big responsibility. He's been with the sheriff's office since 1990, worked pretty much every area in the sheriff's office. Two of his probably biggest assignments where he did a lot of work, one was with our SWAT team, and he is a certified instructor in basic SWAT and SWAT leader school and all of that, and also was the director of the Office of Emergency Services, and maybe some of you remember him from there. So Jeff just recently got the position last month. It was a competitive job, he went against some very good candidates. I think the one thing that probably put Jeff over the top is the guy has a ton of energy. So, it's going to be an e-ticket ride with him at the helm, but anyways, welcome, Jeff, congratulations on your appointment.
Is this a new appointment, or a loose slot, or is it, he's replacing someone?
He's replacing, he's replacing somebody. So, yeah, Assistant Sheriff Sanchez got promoted to Under Sheriff Sanchez.
I figured somebody, I didn't know if somebody retired or how that worked. Okay, thanks.
So that's how that worked. So, just a quick update on the automated license plate readers, and where we're at and what's going on. First, I want to talk about regional trends with ALPRs, or Automated License Plate Readers. More and more towns and cities are getting them and are, are using them. Recently, the town of Portola Valley has passed their automated license plate readers, they're going to be putting them in their community. When that happened, Ladera has approached the county, and Ladera wants them, so we're working with Ladera to put them in there. And so, the concept of ALPRs and that technology is very much growing regionally. Another issue is policy development. We worked really hard to create a policy that addressed the things that we needed to do technically and tactically with license plate readers, but also deal with the civil liberties issues. And so, we are working currently with the ACLU, having them review our policy, and I spoke to them recently, I'll be speaking to them again. They're very excited about the opportunity to review our policy, they really liked the initial policy that they saw, but we're open to anything they have to say that can help us address any civil liberties concerns. I've worked with the ACLU on policies, having a nexus to civil liberties issues in the past. They're very great to work with, especially when you do it proactively instead of reactively. And, and so, you know, we don't always do everything that they ask, but on the other hand, they often find things that we may not have considered. So it's a good relationship, and we have that policy being reviewed. In terms of what's being done with the ALPR data now, it's really, it's really a routine part of what our- it's really a routine part of what our investigators do during their criminal investigations, and so much so that it's very difficult for me to track and tell you how many times it's being used, who's using it, and for what. But it's really becoming just another tool, one of the many tools that they're using, many technology tools that they're using. A couple of success stories that's been out in the county, very rare recently, one in a city that I don't want to name, because I don't know where they are with this investigation, and it's up to them, but there was a city that had a, an issue where a 12-year-old female victim was a victim of indecent exposure case, and they had really not much information to go on. They did get a suspect vehicle description, a general description, and they literally searched through their investigators through thousands of license plate in a local ALPR reader, and they were able to actually find a plate that came back to a person who has prior convictions for sex cases and was actually a 290 sex registrant in the area. And they were able to find his car, arrest him on the case. He had been out of compliance with his 290 sex registration, he had prior cases for sexual assaults against other people, including juveniles, and so they were able to get him off the street. In a case that's very close to home, including it was a San Carlos, it was actually a San Carlos place, it was a local burglary, wherein we had a neighbor who had video, and actually was able to see this vehicle in the video, and it had unique rims. And so we checked our, we were able to see what type of vehicle that was, what year, make, and model. In order to narrow that down, our detectives actually carried the picture of it down to a dealership, so they can narrow down the year of that car. When we got the year of that car, we checked through the ALPR data to see if that car, that car like that had passed, we looked at the pictures, we found the car. So our investigators were able to determine that that vehicle was the suspect vehicle in a burglary, and they're still working and following that up. It was actually not just a single burglary, this is a burglary crew, and they're responsible for multiple burglaries, and there's multiple suspects involved. So those are two success stories on the ALPRs. And, you know, again, they're doing well, I think our policy's in good shape, we have success stories, and a lot of agencies are clamming on board. So that's where we're at, we're at with that. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Grokot?
I just have one. Just a little story to front it, my question. One time I was riding my bike through Woodside on Highway 84, and a car went by, and somebody whacked me in the back of the head with a wet towel, they'd been to the beach. And I managed to stay with the car and get in touch with the sheriff's department, and they came out and interviewed me, and they insisted that I not only be able to identify the car, but identify the driver and the passengers, because obviously it was a passenger that, you know, hit me with a towel, wet towel. So my question is, you identify the vehicle, but you have, how do you know who's been driving that vehicle? If somebody, you know, took my truck out and drove it around unbeknownst to me or benonest to me, either way, you see what I'm saying? You've got a vehicle, but that doesn't necessarily tie the vehicle to the criminal.
Well, you're right. You know, when you have that vehicle identified, that doesn't mean your case is over, you've made the case and you've got somebody in custody. It's a good tangible working lead, it can tell you who's involved. You may be able to find out that that vehicle, you know, who owns the vehicle, and that nobody else uses it but that owner. That can help along with the investigation. Or you may find the vehicle and find that the owner doesn't use it, their child uses it. So it's not a, you know, doesn't make everything, and it doesn't completely make the case, but it is a good working lead. So.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Appreciate it. And welcome, Jeff. We'll try to keep you only a little busy. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item 8A, a public hearing, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing expenditures into not to exceed amount of $140,000 in the Supplemental Law Enforcement Special Funds, SLESF, to be used to support frontline law enforcement services. And you're back.
I'm back. In 19, in the fiscal year 1997, the state of California set up this grant program and for supplemental law enforcement funds for local communities to be used in order to combat crime in their local communities in a manner that the city, that was most convenient to that particular community. So each year, the city of San Carlos has received those grant fundings, and for the past six years, we've been using that money to fund a second traffic deputy. As you know, the city of San Carlos had contracted for one traffic deputy when we transitioned to the sheriff's office, and then shortly after that, due to the high priority traffic safety is for this council, the council decided to hire a second traffic deputy. And we're using partially city funds for that, but partially grant funds to do that as well. So we've been doing that for six years, having two motor deputies deployed to help increase traffic safety. And so this request is to continue that, which is the council has decided to do for the past six years. And in addition to that, an additional $50,000 to be used to update our emergency preparedness center, there are some updates that we could use for that. We have a person on contract who's helping with that, and our EOC, our emergency operations center, really does need some updating, so that we would be very prepared in a local emergency. As you know, we're very fortunate we haven't had that, but I certainly promise you that if something really bad happens, we're going to want that room to be tight and very good. And that's the intention for that money. So that's the proposal, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief. First off, I certainly support your proposal and will be voting for it, perhaps even moving it if nobody else beats me to the, beats me to the punch. The question I wanted to ask you, actually, is a follow-on to discussions you and I have had a couple of times over the years, which is, given the very high level of concern in the community about, let me call it traffic safety, traffic and pedestrian safety, vehicular interaction safety, why should we, and I know it's very expensive, but why should we not be thinking about asking you to get a third motor cop? Can you walk us through kind of the trade-offs involved there?
You know, it's really tough for a police chief to say no to more resources when a council wants to give it to him, I can tell you.
Well, it's just me, so it may not be the council.
But I will say this, that this council has already invested in a level of dedicated traffic enforcement, that I think on a proportional basis or a per capita basis, that few, if any, cities in the county can duplicate. We have two dedicated motor deputies for less than 30,000 people, and I'm not so sure that another city has that ratio. So we're, you know, the council's already certainly made a big statement in that area, and, you know, has kind of put the money where their mouth is when it comes to traffic safety as it is. Also, with respect to traffic accidents, you know, however many we have, it's too many as far as we're all concerned, but based on the last traffic index that we see, San Carlos is not an unsafe community to be driving in in comparison to similar cities. And, you know, obviously, being in an accident here doesn't apply to you, and that those stats don't feel good, but those are the facts. So for those reasons, it's not necessary, I don't feel the need to bring forth and request a third motor deputy.
Yeah, I guess, you know, you make a really good point there, which is, most of the commentary that I hear, or the anecdotal examples that either I experience or I have other people confront me with, actually don't result in accidents, they are near misses, okay?
Yes.
And I suppose we can perhaps take some solace in the fact that the level of enforcement we have is keeping it to near misses as opposed to actual events. Well, it's just something I hope you will keep an eye on, as I suspect that you do as we go forward, because I'm at least willing to consider putting additional resources on it if, in fact, we need to, because it is such a high priority for a lot of people.
I will, sir, and thank you. And the council's always been very good about making sure that if I need anything, that I don't hesitate to ask, and I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Chief, for the report. I just had one question, there's a line in here under equipment and supplies purchase. You mentioned numerous perishable items are needed in the event of a local emergency with technological advances, et cetera. What are the perishable items?
Well, in the event of a local emergency, depending upon the nature of the emergency, we could have staff here basically living out of here and sleeping in here. So we need to eat in here, have water, and those kinds of things. And so we have stuff there, but it's pretty old. So we need to make sure that we're stocked up. Again, it's, you know, it's in the worst-case scenario, but it's, you know, we have an obligation to have our act together if that were ever to happen, in every way we possibly can. And we're close, and we've done a lot, we've made a lot of progress over the years. But we do have some more things to do, and this money can be used for that. And one of the things, as silly as it might sound, is staff in council could be here for extended time, too, just needs the basic necessities while they're here.
How often do you anticipate that you'd have to rotate that, those items?
Very infrequently. Very infrequently, because the storage life, shelf life on those is pretty long, so. And we're not talking about a lot for that. Some of the more expensive items might be, for example, we're looking at a board that we can use, a sliding board that we can use against those windows up in our emergency operations center that we can tuck away when we don't need them, and we have the windows open, but we can have them ready. We need board space up there in the event of something happens, we have no place to write, we have no place to, you know, basically have everything up on the board so everybody can see it. And so that's one of the more expensive items. The food item is probably not the most expensive item.
Thanks. So this is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash...
Forty-two.
Forty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, authorizing expenditures in the not-to-exceed amount of $140,000 in the Supplemental Law Enforcement Special Funds, SLESF, to be used to support frontline law enforcement services.
A second? All right, who moves in second in any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, the next item is Study Session 9A, Discussion of Use of Funds from PG&E Settlement and General Direction for Future Action. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item was an item that was requested to be put on the agenda by the council for you to discuss, so there's no report to go along with it this evening. Staff's here to answer any questions you might have or to participate in the conversation as you might find helpful. So with that, I think we'll turn it over to you. Okay, I don't know whether I should have, there's some folks that want, at least one person that wants to speak on this, should I have them speak now as opposed to after we do? I think I'll do that. So, Mr. Perkins, you want to come up?
Good evening, my name is Brian Perkins, I'm a resident on St. Francis Way, and I was hoping the council would instruct staff to consider using this money to build a kiddy for an affordable housing project, one that would be useful for the folks that are in town that are struggling with their rents. I don't think I need to tell the council about all of those folks, but I will say that there's a lot of housing construction going on now, but it's certainly not keeping up with the job market, and it's not keeping up with human needs. So I hope that the council will take a look at that. I realize you had an earlier item that's a $10 million shortfall in transportation project, but that's just another example of how housing always gets pushed off as a priority in public life, because it's something that's discretionary. And I hope that you'll really reach out to some of the housing developers around the county, and around the Bay Area, actually, and see if they have any proposals that might be useful for you. It's a lot of, a lot of money. Thank you so much.
Sorry about that, Brian.
That's okay.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, God, I love these machines. Chris Woodman?
Good evening, councilors, Chris Woodman, 1943, St. Francis Way.
Wow, that was pretty quick. That's it. Thanks, Chris, thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could someone take this for me? Before I throw it? Go ahead, sorry, Chris.
I will try to make it quick.
Take your time, take your time.
Thank you very much for letting me speak this evening, just briefly. I would like to make a pitch for using funds, such as the PG&E funds, for something that citizens are not inclined to raise funds for, such as they do for parson rec and schools, a resource that our community desperately needs more of, that is done only with city support, as Brian mentioned, is affordable housing. So I'd like to just speak very briefly about that. We know that the city can use its land to leverage development, witness Wheeler Plaza, and we know that the city can use its funds to leverage development, witness the hotel going up at Industrial and Holly. I have just had the opportunity to finish working on a 70-unit affordable housing project on El Camino in Palo Alto, and I believe that if you combined the PG&E settlement funds, or some of them, with other city housing funds, it might be possible to leverage them to produce at least 50 affordable housing units in San Carlos. The San Mateo Community College District has developed two beautiful projects on its lands for its teachers. Now, I know that you have many nondiscretionary needs demanding funds such as these that have become available, but I would hope that San Carlos would consider doing something similar on affordable housing as San Mateo Community College did, towards, again, towards affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris, very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right. I have Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a proposal that I wanted to run by my colleagues, and I put together a couple brief slides, if maybe Crystal could pull those up. And I can grab the clicker. But I think we have, you know, a great opportunity with this $6 million. My proposal is to use some portion of the money, not all of it, to create a San Carlos Community Foundation that would be used to provide grants to local organizations, to do positive things in the community, to get the community more involved, and to structure it in such a way that it creates sort of money in perpetuity, long after all of us are on the council. It's still providing value and benefit to the council. So, as I said, you know, trying to go kind of to the core of what makes this community special, which is a spirit of volunteerism, a lot of community and civic involvement. And so think about ways in which we can support that mission by helping local organizations build community. There was an effort a few years ago to create an overarching organization in San Carlos called San Carlos Together, that meant to kind of bind together a lot of these community organizations, but it's never really gotten off the ground and had sufficient funding. On the school and education side of the house, one of the insights that the PTAs had a long time ago is they used to compete with one another for fundraising, and they decided that if they pooled their resources and created the San Carlos Education Foundation, they could do a lot better. And it's been a huge success, and they raise over $2 million a year. And so the idea is to have an overarching organization that could be focused on building value for our community. So local organizations, you know, that could be beneficiaries of this San Carlos Community Foundation are all the great local organizations that we have today. And so, you know, here's like a straw man that I would put out for folks to think about, you know, if we took 2 million of the 6 million, and let's, you know, say that we got a 4% return, and that we were able to do some local fundraising to supplement that, you know, we could generate $100,000 a year, which is much more than we appropriate from the general fund for kind of local grants these days. And that, I could imagine that such an organization would be, you know, governed by a board of local volunteers, perhaps with a seat for a member of the council, to have it tied directly to the city, and to provide an open and transparent process for local organizations, community members who have ideas about how to make their community better, to put that money to use in San Carlos. So that's my contribution to ideas about how to spend the $6 million.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had one quick question, and I just have a couple of comments to make. A question for staff is, if we were to, my understanding is that our Affordable Housing Fund, money that goes into the Affordable Housing Fund cannot easily be taken out, it must be spent on affordable housing. And that may or may not be correct, but my question is, if we were to take some of this money and dedicate it, earmark it, whatever term you want to use, to affordable housing, could it still be under this discretionary control of the council if some emergency came up?
Yeah. It wouldn't have the same restrictions as the housing money that's raised from various fees and sources.
Why is it the restrictions from where the money comes from, not the account that it's sitting in?
That's correct.
Okay, good. The, I think, Cameron, I think your idea is an interesting one. I'm not sure that, you know, I'd want to think about it a little bit more, I'm not sure that I necessarily support it. I will just want to point out for the benefit of my colleagues, since I was, peripherally, I guess I would say, but intimately involved in the rise of the Ed Foundation back in the early aughts, the really key thing that happened there, it wasn't, it wasn't really necessarily the PTAs deciding that they were better off raising money together, that happened eventually, but... That happened eventually, but it took a lot of effort by people. But the really, really critical thing that happened is it was the community coming together to say, we have to do something, community members coming together to say, we have to do something to help improve the financial situation at our schools. It was not sponsored by the school district. The school district did not inject money into it or get it started. It was really a grassroots kind of thing. And my biggest concern about establishing a fund actually with public money is that we might actually undermine that very, to me, very, very necessary step, which is it has to be a grassroots thing, not a top-down thing. Personally, I would very much like to see us dedicate the money to the affordable housing crisis that we all keep talking about. I've been spending a lot of time recently learning about that, more than I've known for the last few years of being on the council. I think there are a number of opportunities that we do not currently take advantage of that we could with both the existing level of funds we have and certainly with an augmented level of funds. One critical thing that I have heard from every affordable housing expert that I've talked to, and it's been probably about eight or nine of them at this point, is the key element is having enough capital to get a seat at the table, basically, and trigger the construction of a project. You don't necessarily have to pay for the entire land yourself, but you've got to have enough money that you can raise the remaining balance that you need. And that becomes a very critical step. And it seems to me that taking this unexpected $6 million and including it on top of our, what is it, Jeff, $8 million that we have in the Affordable Housing Fund, plus or minus?
I think it's plus.
Plus, okay. So it wouldn't quite double it, but it would be a very substantial increase. And I'd really like to see us give some serious consideration to that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may come as a surprise because nobody is more of an advocate of affordable housing than I am, since I sit on a few committees and boards dedicated to that purpose. But, you know, we've got a project very close to being funded. I realize a $10 million shortfall is a lot of money for the Holly 101. So I would like to see that money dedicated to the project that's going to benefit the most people in this town and the traffic around the area to that project. We already have, I think it's more like $12 million mark in the Affordable Housing Fund. We've got a couple of projects that are ready to go. I'm not saying that we had to put all 6 million toward it, but I'd like to see as much of that money go toward that project as possible, because I think that once we, once we show that we are well on our way, that other resources may become available to us. And I don't want to see us lose that opportunity. It's just too much, too much to lose. But like I say, I am a huge supporter of affordable housing. I think we need to continue to pursue that. But there are other opportunities that are coming about. The county has dedicated quite a bit of money toward, to making loans available to Heart and other organizations to build affordable housing. There is a countywide effort now that is coalescing toward building more affordable housing. So it's not just a San Carlos thing. So, not that I don't think that we need to put more money to affordable housing. We're always working to do that. But this Holly 101 project, to me, is so close that we need to look at devoting the lion's share of the money toward that. Otherwise, I think the consequences of that are things that are, something that we don't want to think about.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Mr. Grokot?
So when I look at this, I put it a little bit in personal terms. If I, you know, hit a jackpot, what would I do? And what I would do is exactly what Cameron talked about. I would not spend it, the bulk of it, because you can put yourself in a good position by investing it and then taking off the top. And not only can you invest and take off the top, but as you invest and you get earnings, you can always plow those earnings back in to your investments until you have a substantial amount to do a significant project. This is what universities do. This is what private schools do. And I think we should take a significant amount of this money and do the same, understanding that when you do that, it gets complex because you need a controlling board, as Cameron alluded to, that makes decisions about how you're going to use the money and invest it and so forth. But I think it'd be well worth our effort to put something like that together. So I applaud his idea on that. I think to what Mr. Collins said about the 101 interchange, I would agree to the point that, and this is going by my experience being on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board, when you bring projects to these organizations, what they look for and what helps your scoring, as Jay knows, is if you're putting in some of your own money. And so to the extent that it would help our scoring in getting any more funding or convincing Jerry Hill or Kevin Mullen or Jackie Spear or anybody that they should help us, or Redwood City, that, you know, they should help us with that project, then I would agree to using that, some of it, for leveraging that. And then my conclusion is, as I told the newspapers when they called, I wouldn't want to see any of it used for anything that creates an ongoing operational expense to the city. So it has to be some form of capital improvement. And, you know, to the degree that affordable housing is a capital improvement, I could agree with that. But I wouldn't want to take the lion's share of the money and put it towards affordable housing. I agree with Ron. There's enough programs out there that, you know, it sits on its own.
Okay, thank you. Well, going last, I get the opportunity to have listened to everyone's ideas. And I also agree that, with Mr. Grokot, that I think the, once you spend it, you spend it. And I don't, if I found $20, I wouldn't necessarily want to run right out and spend it. And that's sort of, my philosophy's always been that way. I think we have an opportunity here with Mr. Johnson's idea, with a couple of million dollars and a couple of million dollars into affordable housing and a couple of million dollars into the Highway 101 project. And we could theoretically split it three ways or however the council wants to do it. But I think those are three really good ideas in my mind. How much detail, Mr. City Manager, do you want tonight? Is this going to be the last chance that we're going to get to come up with some brilliant ideas, or is there another step after this?
Well, there's always another step, as you know. This is government. We don't run out of steps. We're hoping to get enough direction from the council tonight that would help us put that into the budget, which is coming to you in about a month or so, so that it would be, you know, part of the staff recommendation based on council direction so we could get it in there. And you could see it reflected in the proposed budget document for next year. But of course, during the budget discussion, you guys could, you know, hammer it out and change your mind and come up with, you know, five new ideas if you chose before you adopt the budget. And then, of course, even after you adopt the budget, you could always re-agendize the item and change your mind. As you know, you know, for the public that's watching and listening in the audience, we don't anticipate receiving this money until the end of the year. It's still not a slam dunk getting this money. It requires the California, excuse me, the California Public Utilities Commission to approve it. So we're just kind of getting our ducks in a row here in this conversation, and we'll be getting our ducks in a row with the budget. But obviously, we wouldn't want to be spending money, actually spending the money until we had it in hand.
Well, I think it appears, and correct me, my colleagues can correct me, it appears that none of us want to put it to operations. I don't think. And if I'm misspeaking, then correct me. And it's some sort of, as I said, the three items that were brought up. Mr. Johnson, do you have another comment?
I was just going to endorse the mayor's idea of splitting it three ways.
Okay, well, there's some ideas there. There may be some other ideas that would crop up. And again, we have an opportunity. Do we have any idea when the CPUC is going to be voting on this?
The latest procedural deadline is December 29th of this year is when the, the time for the decision on the ex parte procedure has to be concluded. So it could be 30 to 60 days after that date, but it could be before. It just depends on when they get to.
All right, it's not in a minute. So, any other comments on this item? All right, we'll move on. Mr.?
I was just going to ask, I mean, while we've got you and while you're talking about this, I'd be interested in hearing from the council members again reacting to your idea, Mr. Mayor, about splitting it three ways. I mean, obviously, we heard from all, we know all of you support at least one of those items, but I'm curious, just in totality, where the council might be at.
Okay, well, Mr. Johnson spoke. Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, I could see splitting it three ways, although I don't see it as something where it's two plus two plus two.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yes, I agree with Matt. I, three ways is fine, just not a third, a third, a third. I mean, we're going to have to work through that a little bit more deeply.
Mr. Olbert, any comment?
I don't really have much to add over what I said earlier. You know, as I mentioned in the comments when Jay was doing his report on the Holly 101 interchange, I have serious doubts about whether or not putting additional money to that project, you know, earns us brownie points to get more money. It almost seems like what will happen is people will say, hey, they'll fund it themselves. Let's not bother giving them anything.
Okay. All right, well, we talked about that. Good. Thank you very much for all the input. And thank you for the public also to, for the input that you had, Chris and Brian. Thank you. All right, move on to 10, new business. 10A, Consideration of Establishing a High-Speed Rail Ad Hoc Subcommittee and Appointing Two City Council Representatives.
Evening again, Mr. Mayor. This is another item that was requested by the City Council to be placed on your agenda. As you're all very aware, the council creates subcommittees from time to time to work on special issues that come up in the community. High-speed rail, obviously, going through their environmental process is a special issue that the council's aware of. The idea here with the subcommittee is not just to work with staff, which is typically how most subcommittees work, but also to potentially reach out to other elected officials in the neighboring affected communities to explore the possibility of cost-sharing, coalition-building, that type of thing.
Okay. Do you have any volunteers?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, since I think I was the person who triggered this item being put on the agenda, I just wanted to also mention that since I brought that up, I've learned that the route for the proposed passing tracks, or the extent of the proposed passing tracks, would not really occupy very much of either San Mateo or Redwood City. It's primarily a Belmont-San Carlos issue. So that's just something for us to think about, that in terms of outreach, this may be primarily a San Carlos-Belmont issue.
All right.
I should mention, I'm also interested in being one of the members of the subcommittee.
And, yes, I would as well.
Okay, is that, well, we can make a motion for that unless someone, unless you, other gentlemen want to be on it?
Mr. Mayor, I move to establish a High-Speed Rail Ad Hoc Subcommittee and appoint council members Olbert and Collins as representatives.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Gasselli.
Yes. And I read, as, just before I came here, and this is really not related to high-speed rail, but it is related to electrification, and maybe everyone knows about this, that apparently today, maybe you know more about it than I do, so you can say it. It was approved.
Yeah, Elaine Chao, Secretary of Transportation, signed the full funding grant agreement for $647 million. So electrification can move forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, 10B, Discussion and Direction of the City Council Representative, myself, Regarding Extending the Term of Franchise Agreement with Recology San Mateo County for Solid Waste Recycling and Organic Materials Collection Services. Jay, thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, this item is back in the audience. We have Joe LaMariana from SBWMA, and we have some recology representatives. So if there are questions from the presentation last meeting, Crystal would be able to bring that presentation up and maybe aid in your discussion as we go forward. But there's no other presentation formally. Just in case there's questions, we have folks that could answer those.
Okay. Mr. Grokot, questions?
Yeah, I just had a question. Doesn't the recology trucks go over the interchange that we were talking about earlier, looking for funding?
That's right. Maybe we could put that in, Joe, can we put that in the contract?
We established a toll road.
A toll road, there you go. Yeah, a toll road.
Only westbound.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since, again, I think I was one of the people who triggered this item being put on the agenda, I just wanted to mention that since our last meeting, I've had some extensive discussions with Joe and various other people, for which, thank you, Joe, appreciated the time and all the work that your staff did. I am comfortable with the idea of us moving forward with the proposed form of contract and, you know, giving direction to our representative, the mayor, to do that. I do, however, have one question that concerns me that I'm not exactly sure where I stand on it. I would be interested in my colleagues' reactions. And that has to do with the term of the contract. 15 years essentially means that we will have had more or less the same cost structure, the same, let me call it, technology system for picking up trash and delivering it to where it needs to go and whatnot, for 25 years by the time it's done. That's a very long period of time. It's, you know, 15 additional years that we're talking about adding on, that we're locked into that approach. And that is a source of some concern for me, just because there's hardly anything else about life in the Bay Area that's remained unchanged for 25 years. And I almost, I almost feel like maybe we would be better off trying to get a shorter-term contract, you know, going with the 10-year rather than the 15-years. Although, if you asked me to say, well, what is the five-year worth in terms of flexibility, I'm not sure how to answer that.
Okay. Mr. Grokot?
Yeah. Number one, I agree with what Mr. Olbert just pointed out. That's the point I was trying to make last time we saw this. And that's why I was asking Joe about, I know there's cost savings in going out as far as you can, but I would rather see it that it's 10, and then it's asked that we extend it another five and have that opportunity for various reasons. One of them is, I agree with Mr. Olbert about, you know, the change in technology and that sort of thing. And then, just my other, you know, if I don't say it now, don't have a chance to say it again, I suppose, is I really strongly disagree with the franchise agreement that envelopes the expense of the city's trash pickup being included simply in the rates of every one of our ratepayers. In other words, the city is not treated like a customer and doesn't pay for its own trash pickup. And to me, that borders on being illegal because you're using a fee as though it's a tax. And that's not right. And it's also not very transparent to the public what's going on.
Could I make a point, Mr. Rubens? The agreement, of course, is going to be at a high level. The 12 entities will vote on it. And then all of them come back individually to this. If it's passed, it comes back individually. Wouldn't that be the place where we'd address Mr. Grokot's comment?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll have an opportunity to make some changes to the model agreement, especially on the level of services. So I think that's in that category.
That's where, you get another shot at that. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess when I think about this 25-year agreement, I also, it reminds me of the fact that we have a five-year agreement with the Redwood City Fire Department. And how often do we renegotiate that or make amendments to it or make changes to it?
Well, we make changes to it every year in the form of cost. And we renegotiate the entire contract every, well, I mean, the entire contract. The entire contract's open to be renegotiated every five years.
Do similar provisions exist in this agreement? If we don't like something two, three, five years down the road?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Do we have the ability to address that?
There are certain things that we do and certain things that we don't. The capital investment is locked in for the term of the contract. That's the $48 million that's being proposed to modify and replace the fleet. There are certainly opportunities to meet and confer on a number of issues along the way. So it... way, so I'd have to get a better sense of the kinds of things you're talking about or contemplating. Would they be in the scope of services, or would they be performance-related issues?
I was just thinking, anything in the contract, no matter what it was.
Well, it wouldn't be that open. We would be, you know, there's a set of parameters that we go into and we put our ink on the contract, and we understand that a certain scope of services is being provided for a certain compensation structure to it. Now, within that, there are opportunities to sit down and talk. I'm trying to think of some specifics as an example, and they're not coming to mind.
I realize it's a broad question, and we have multiple agencies involved in the contract, so, I mean, if something's going sideways...
Yeah. Oh, that's a performance issue, that there are definitely provisions in the contract to make sure that we're maintaining the great service levels that we've enjoyed the last seven years, yeah. And if something isn't, if it's going off track, we do have the ability, as the agency and, you know, your representative, to meet with the company and state our case, and there are liquidated damages provisions in there for non-performance in certain areas, so that's how we'd appreciate it.
I'll get you a second. Thanks, Joe.
Sure.
I have a little different perspective on this, and maybe it's the financial background I have, or maybe the work background I have. To me, if you gave me an opportunity for a 15-year contract, and you tell me approximately, again, we don't know exactly what it's going to cost every year, that's a stream that I can budget, I can really plan on doing that. Secondly, when you talk about technology, and I was in construction, and I'm trying to think, except for maybe one or two items in the 27 years that I worked, I didn't see a lot of, I look around at how people are building houses now, and I don't see a lot different than the way we built them and we stopped in 2004. Picking up garbage, in my mind, has been, I've seen it two ways. The gentleman in the older days, and still do in certain places, because they have to carry the can, and now it's got the machine that's doing it. I don't know what the, and again, I certainly can't see to the future. I'm sure nobody saw cell phones, and nobody saw some of this other stuff. But the technology in that business, to me, is less, from this, not at the transfer station, I think that's a whole different world, but from the actual physical pickup, I can't, it's hard for me to see how the technology could get too much in that last five years, because you're going to have a 10-year plan, and then someone mentioned about a five-year extension. Well, if you're going to try to do that, there, again, it'd probably be, I don't mean to put words in the company's mind, I'd be asking for a 10-year extension, because if it's a five-year extension, I might have to put more capital out, and I don't necessarily want to risk it on a five-year plan. That's why it started as a 10-year contract to begin with. But that's just my opinion, so I think a 15-year idea is much better. But again, that's just mine. Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, just a question that Mark had brought up last time about the possibility of people, say, on a cul-de-sac or something like that, being able to combine their services, maybe get a bigger black can, and, you know, somebody's responsible for paying that one bill. Is that something also that would be us individually and not?
Yeah, I think that counts as level of service and how we want services delivered in our community.
Thank you.
So, we've gotten some ideas of direction. I think the key one, apparently, is the 10. Mr. Grokot and Mr. Olbert felt that it should be a 10-year plan, and myself, 15. I didn't hear from the other gentleman on whether they think it should be 15. It's right now, it's scheduled to be a 15, I believe, that's what the committee is recommending. So if the council gives me the opportunity, I would vote, depending on how they want to do it. Mr. Collins?
I'm in favor of 15.
Okay, that's two. Mr. Grokot?
When you're there, if you could just bring up the, I understand your point about, you know, capital and so forth in 10 years, and so maybe the compromise could be a 10 and a 10, so that...
Yeah, the difficulty...
25, it just seems like a long time.
I understand. The difficulty is, the committee has recommended a 15, so it's sort of either-or. It's, that's sort of how...
Right, and I'm just, all I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is as our representative, perhaps you could just bring up the idea of 10 and 10?
If that's what the council wants me to do, although I'd still like to have the direction to vote for or against the entire, that's what I'm looking for, the entire thing. If it doesn't, if it isn't a 10 and 10, do I still have the opportunity to vote yes or no, or how you want me to vote?
My take on that would be to vote yes. I'm just saying, if it could be brought up as a discussion.
Mr. Rubens, do we need a motion specifically directing me on how to do this?
I think that's the way we have it agendized for you, is to do a motion to give you direction. But if there's no motion, then you are, as the representative, you have discretion.
Okay. So, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry.
I mean, I just wanted to weigh in. I voiced this position at the last meeting, but, you know, I think we delegate the authority to the representative, and I don't want to bind Bob's hands, these are complicated negotiations. I trust his judgment. It should be, also state that he's the chair of this board and has to weigh a lot of competing interests, and we do have the opportunity to vote up or down on whatever contract is brought back to us. So I, given that, you know, I'm not going to be in the room, and I don't know how any direction is going to play in all the various twists and turns that these negotiations take, that my preference is let Bob use his good judgment on our behalf, and then we have the opportunity to have our own individual voices heard when we vote on the contract when it comes back.
All right, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, what Cameron said. I somewhat agree with Matt that it's fine to have the discussion about, you know, alternatives, but in the end, I think we should allow you to use your best judgment. You've had a long time on that board, you've had, you have the experience, so I would trust your decision.
All right, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we were reiterating comments from the last meeting, I just want to reiterate what I said, which is, put it a little bit differently. I do trust the mayor. I do trust the mayor to use his good judgment in this situation. But as a famous American statesman once observed, "Trust but verify," okay? And that's the point of having questions, and that's the point of having the council weigh in on the fact, because, again, this is the single largest contract that the city will enter into for the entire term of our tenure on the council, and it affects every single business and person in the community. So, Bob, I support you using your best judgment here. I'm still sort of going back and forth about the 10- or 15-year thing, but I'll worry about that when it actually comes back before us. But I'm glad we had a chance to have this discussion, because we do need to verify stuff in addition to just delegating it.
Well, I agree with you, and that's why I wanted to have it, because some of the councils, I don't know if they are or aren't, but this one, this is such a large contract, as you mentioned, I wanted to make sure I got input. Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, I'm surprised someone hasn't said it already, but Bob is Italian, and being Italian and garbage seems to go together, so...
Thank you. So, no motion, I guess, so I'll use my, I have direction. All right, well, thank you, gentlemen, all right. And thank you all for coming tonight, Joe and Recology. Thank you. All right, moving on. 10C, consideration of accepting the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2016 and direct staff to submit the report to the State Office of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. This is going to be really exciting, isn't it?
Well, we've got a lot to report, actually, as you probably have seen in the staff report. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lisa Porras, Principal Planner in the city's Planning Division, and I would just like to provide the council with a brief summary of the Annual Housing Element Progress Report, and mainly, the focus will be to highlight the number of permits issued for new housing construction in the year 2016. And the recommendation before the council tonight is to consider accepting the report and then directing staff to submit the report to the State Office of Housing and Community Development. So as highlighted in the staff report, the reporting period is the calendar year of 2016, and mainly what the state is looking for, how they track the number of new units, you know, being constructed throughout the state, is through building permit activity. Of course, units can't count unless building permits are actually issued, and there have been cases where projects were approved, but there was delayed construction. I guess Cherry Chestnut would be a good example of that type of delay in housing production. The state also is interested in whether cities have rehabilitated, preserved, or acquired affordable housing in the city. Mainly, what they're looking for in where units can count towards meeting the RENA is if those units rehabilitated or preserved would be under the umbrella of the regional housing needs allocation. We have not identified any of units to be rehabilitated to count towards the RENA, but certainly, we have provided funding for one of the units, or one of the housing projects in the city to be rehabilitated, and that's 812 Walnut, and that's noted in the progress report. The Annual Housing Element Progress Report also looks at a comprehensive overview of the progress to date in meeting the regional housing needs. So, again, we're early on in the eight-year period, but, you know, that's provided in the housing in the report as well. And then, with respect to program implementation, there's many programs and action items in the housing element, and we have noted a brief summary of how we are continuing to implement those programs, including noting to the state that the city chose to adopt a new program that wasn't even listed in the housing element as a program item, which is, of course, the commercial linkage fee. That's also noted in the report. So here's kind of what's really interesting and exciting. Of course, the city can't do this without the development community, but about a year ago, we had a total of about 469 units that we either under review or approved, and last year, we issued a total of 272 permits, well, not 272 permits, but permits for a total of 272 new units to be constructed in our city, of which 23 of those were designated as affordable. Another approximately 200 are expected to be permitted this year, or perhaps next year, depending upon the timing and the processing of those applications. So as you can see in this slide here, again, we're early on in the planning period, but we've exceeded our above-moderate, which is, you know, quite not surprising, because that's the easiest to kind of fulfill. But we have made progress in all of the other income categories, which is something you don't see often, but now that we're having a lot of new development proposals come forward, some of the city's programs, like the below-market-rate housing ordinance, are actually triggered by these new developments, so we're actually getting some affordable units on the books. And with some of the new activity, new additional housing developments currently under review and have yet to receive their building permits, we will see a little bit more in those categories as well. So I've left this rather brief. The Housing Element Annual Progress Report speaks to itself, and there's quite a number of programs that have been, you know, where we've provided updates, so if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, nice presentation. Every time I look at these reports, I always think how sad it is that we do such a minimalist job of meeting the RENA numbers on the, everything except the uppermost tier of the categories. I'm curious, how do we stack up against other communities in that category? I mean, is anybody else doing a noticeably better job than we are proportional to the size of their RENA requirements?
Well, that's something we haven't looked at. There may be a report provided by the state, because, again, every city is providing their annual progress reports to the state. I don't have that information, but it would be interesting to kind of look at that.
I would be very interested in seeing that kind of comparison. I find it oftentimes helpful, when I was in the private sector, to do those kind of comparisons, because you, otherwise, you don't necessarily know what you don't know, that, you know, maybe there's some other approach to use to address some of the issues. So comparison with other comparable cities is important. I'd really like to see that. In particular, also, because I alluded to before about the fact that I spent quite a bit of time talking to affordable housing leaders, I guess I'll say, for lack of a better term, from a number of different not-for-profit organizations. And one of the things that I've run across that's kind of surprising, which I'm going to run down through talking to staff as well, is a number of them who are like senior people or heads of fairly significant local affordable housing organizations, they can't remember the last time they had in-depth contact with San Carlos staff, which is sort of interesting, if true. I mean, it, you know, there's always two sides to a story. But in any event, I would love to see the comparison with other communities, and I hope to find out what level of dialogue we're actually having.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. Good report. I don't know if you can tell me at this point, but how many units do we expect to add this year? These are permits you're talking about that were issued last year, right? I mean, how are we doing this year in terms of issuing more permits?
This year, well, the bulk of the numbers are coming from Transit Village and Wheeler Plaza. So Wheeler Plaza is getting close to getting all of their building permits issued. I mean, they've obviously gotten certain aspects of the project, like grading and whatnot, issued, but it's my understanding that they're very close, if they haven't been already. I mean, it could have been just maybe last week, so I'd have to check with Chris Valley. But the remaining number of new units that are set to come online are almost 200, and so depending upon the timing of those, we could see some of them, well, 108 will be coming, majority will be coming from Wheeler Plaza this year, that we know for sure. And then, you know, I expect probably another at least 50 to be issued this year. So, and it could, you know, fall over and spill over into 2018 of that remaining 200. And we continue to have new development proposals submitted. We probably have approximately 50 new units currently under review at this time that we're looking at. So for this particular year, I would say maybe just a rough estimate could be 150.
And this 249 that's issued for above-moderate, does include some, but not all, of the Transit Village permits? Is that what I was hearing?
That's correct, yes. There have been just four of the affordable units in the Transit Village project that have yet to been issued permits, simply because of the project phasing and getting the below-market-rate housing agreements in place, because some of the projects are, have mixed-use, you know, a mixed-use program within the buildings, where others were straight residential. So there's four additional affordable housing units that we would be able to account for next year.
Do ADUs at all factor into this? You know, people adding second rooms and additions onto houses and things like that? Do those numbers go in here, or is that a separate category?
Well, the state requires that we do report on our building permit activity for second units, so there's been one, for example, that was issued a permit last year. And we can count some of those as affordable housing, but it does take some coordination with the state in terms of what their requirements are for counting those, but there is the opportunity to count those as affordable units.
Okay. And then, the last thing, I noticed that when we do this, when we submit this annual progress report, it puts us in line for certain funding and that sort of thing. Apparently, there's no penalty for not filing it, it's just a reward if you do file it.
Correct.
Okay. The thing I found odd, though, is that it talks about, you know, it's part of this One Bay Area Grant Program. It grants money for local street and maintenance, streetscape enhancement, bicycle and pedestrians, public works, all this stuff. You wonder why they just wouldn't maybe return some money or grant some money toward actual housing, rather than all the amenities surrounding the housing.
Well, this is just one example. And the reason that I mentioned that in the staff report is because planning staff, in collaboration, you know, with our public works peers, we became aware of the fact that they are, in fact, applying for OAB grants, and so they wanted to make sure we were submitting our progress report. So it's just information for the council to let the council know that there is some grant opportunities, you know, that the city would like to, you know, throw their head in the ring for, so we want to make sure we get our Housing Element Progress Report submitted this year.
Absolutely. Whatever we can get back for what we do, I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
So, question, it appears to me like we're, if you don't go just by very low, low, and so forth, the different categories, but overall, we're on track to meet this eight-year target of... we're on track to meet this eight-year target of 596?
I guess with the overall unit count, yes. It remains to be seen how we'll do in the affordable housing income categories. As you can see, for the very low, the RENA allocation is 195. Obviously, that's larger than our above moderate category. So overall, in terms of the overall numbers, we would meet the RENA, but it remains to be seen how successful we'll be with meeting the affordable income categories.
And just a question. It doesn't seem like there's any consideration by the state to take available housing that is, shall we say, affordable because it's, you know, not the greatest. And, you know, improving it, improving its livability, its cleanliness, life and safety, and all these things. You know, some type of program to give incentive to property owners to improve those properties and still keep them affordable, but make them nicer than they are. There's not...
Not really through the regional housing allocation numbers, but there are specific programs that are available to low-income households whereby they can get some assistance to, you know, maybe do some energy upgrades or to maybe rehabilitate... There's a housing rehabilitation loan program that's mentioned in the report. So even though they don't count towards the number, you know, our goal is to look at the, you know, all the opportunities where we can assist folks to preserve the housing units, the housing that they have.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Lisa, again, my memory is foggy. So I look at Table A here, you know, in the report. So 198 units, is that the total units being built at the Transit Village?
The total units is actually 202. And the reason why it's less is because we have four more units to issue permits for.
Okay. That's the four that you mentioned. So if I do the math, that's... Let's assume it's 202. And 16, so it'd be 20 units for 202, which is like 10%. Or no, it's not even... It's not 10%. It's... Yeah, I guess it is 10%. So that's on the Transit Village, that's what we had? We had 10%?
That was the agreement, 10%.
Okay. And then we had 15% on 777 Walnut because there's three for 20.
Correct.
And we had about 10%, I guess, for Cherry Chestnut because it's four out of 34.
Correct. That was a planned development plan, too. So there might... I haven't done... Did a deep dive into the math on that one, but...
No, I'm just saying it's... Okay. So each of the projects, depending on how... When they come to us, we can theoretically set... Or do we have a policy of a minimum of 10 and goes up to 15 or what? Or is each project discreet?
Well, our below-market-rate housing ordinance is triggered for ownership projects that have a total of seven units or more, right? So the requirement is that 15% of those be designated as affordable housing. And then of the 15%, there's a split. So 10% is moderate, and then 5% is very low. Am I getting that?
Yeah. I'm more aware about the totals, not how they're broken up. So... But for the apartments, we had a 10% at that time. We had a 10% rule?
Well, it was an agreement that the council reached.
Right. That's what I thought.
Because it was a rental property. So rather than paying the affordable housing impact fees, there was an agreement where the units would actually be provided.
But if an apartment project comes before us, we can sort of... It's like a development agreement. We can... That number can change to 15 or 20 or whatever we agree with, with the person who's building it.
There are alternatives towards providing the impact fees.
Okay. Great. All right. What we need to do here is accept the housing element... Thank you, by the way, Lisa, very much. Move to accept the housing element progress report. So is there a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the housing element progress report for 2016 and direct staff to submit the report to the State Office of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research.
Second.
All right. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mary Griselli?
Yes. All right. Moving on. 11. Council Communications and Announcements. Start at the far end. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Crystal, would you mind punching up that photograph, please? I was motivated by the announcement through the High-Speed Rail Authority that their EIR that they're reviewing this summer contemplates as one of the alternatives, building a four-lane, a four-track-wide passing track system extending from southern San Mateo to northern Redwood City, right through Belmont and San Carlos, that would be 78 feet above sea level, not including the catenaries that power the train. So as I was walking back along Laurel Street one evening, it occurred to me that I could probably do a little bit of an artist rendition of what that might look like, which I'm going to fine-tune a little bit, getting out my tape measure to measure some of the heights a little bit more closely than I was able to do by eye. But this is roughly to scale, and I just wanted my colleagues and the public to be aware of this. This is a... Would be a very large structure by San Carlos standards. It's also worth noting or reminding people, as we all know, that EIRs always study the... What you can call it is kind of the most likely worst scenario because the one thing that you don't want to do is to redo the EIR. So just the fact that you're looking at something this big doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to build it that big. But it's a cause for concern, I think. And it's certainly something that I think the community wants to get... You should want to get involved in. There'd be plenty of opportunities at public meetings that the High-Speed Rail Authority is holding, both in San Carlos and other communities in the peninsula, to weigh in on some of the implications of this. But I did want to share this picture with you just so you could get a... I don't know if it's a bird's eye view, but a little view of what it might look like.
All right. Mr. Collins?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I attended a HART fundraising event for teacher housing. It was at Devil's Canyon a couple of weeks ago. Very well-attended, and we're making great progress. We have a member of the... The superintendent of San Mateo County Schools is a member of the HART board now. And the county's, as I think I mentioned earlier, is going to be loaning HART money. Some of that specifically is going to go directly for teacher housing. A lot of the school districts are very interested in it. Anyway, it was a great event. And I also attended, I think it was the very next day, the HIP Housing Annual Luncheon, and Bob was there. I think that was... We were the representatives from San Carlos. It was a good event. HIP, as many of you may know, has a project right around the corner, and they also fill a very important role in the housing needs of this county. So anyway, that's it for me.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Had a great time at Hometown Days. Thanks to everybody who volunteered to put that together. My daughter went on the zip line for the first time, and she loved it. Went back many times. Had a library board meeting this morning. We looked at the budget. The library's in great shape. That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
Crystal, do you have those pictures? So we all received this email from the lady who was here earlier. These are pictures I... I don't know if she took them or who, but of Holly Street with trucks running up and down on Holly, which they're not supposed to do. And so I just wanted to show this publicly because this is a problem. We do have restrictions on vehicles like that running up and down Holly. So I would just say to my councilmembers, I hope we can somehow find a way to enforce these rules more stringently than it's being done because it really is unsafe, especially for like this bus, for instance. The turning radius is on the... There's a little bit of an S-curve on Holly, and it really squeezes people out because those lanes, when we put in four, they're just too narrow for this kind of thing. So we need to come up with something to induce enforcement and prevent this kind of thing going on. And when I say enforcement, I think some of it, too, is just knowledge and getting the word out. Somehow, we need to do a better job. So... And then lastly, speaking of Hometown Days, while I wasn't in the parade, I won first place in the 5K fun run under elected officials because I was the only one.
I wondered where he was going with that. If I had run, I would have won my age group.
If I had run, I would have been like Rosie Ruiz, and you have to be old to know who that is. You probably know who Rosie Ruiz is, you know? But for the rest of the world, we'll just let them guess. Look it up on the internet. Okay. Is that all you have, Mr.? Yeah, we had a great Hometown Days. I don't... I just couldn't believe the amount of people that were there both days, Saturday and Sunday. It was just amazing.